Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, March the 26th, 2024. Again, this is a hybrid public meeting. Some members of the public are welcome to participate remotely or in person. In person, we are in the community room of the Norton Public Library. To join online via the Zoom app, please use the link available on the meeting agenda or meeting ID 6389291060. There's also a phone number available for those wishing to dial in direct. The meeting will also be streamed live on Norton Cable access for those wishing to view on television. For future sessions, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, town staff, whose email address is on the listed agenda. So with that, I'll dive into our revised agenda. Just a couple of points here. There is an executive session posted at the end of the agenda. We will save that for the end, so when we go through the rest of our agenda, we will close the public session. We will ask everybody here joining us in the library to go, and then we'll have a very short executive session as needed. In terms of planning board business and policies, I also want to share that it does appear that we have, we do have a planner signed on to join the town again, starting April the 16th, and that is Paul Di Giuseppe rejoining the town of Norton. So the ink is dry on that, so I am comfortable saying it, hurrah.
Welcome back, Paul.
Okay. So we do not have any bills or warrants to approve at this time. We did have a sharing release from our last session, which I believe everybody had signed, so we are all set on that front. We will have minutes to approve likely at our next session or in future sessions, as Brian has gotten some assistance in working through some of that. So with all that out of the way, we'll dive into the public hearing section of our agenda. First item listed is site plan reviews 20100, 20103, and special permits 19928 and 19935. That is for Zero Mansfield Avenue. It's a continuation of, a few different times we've tried this application to build multifamily buildings on Zero Mansfield Avenue. So thank you, Mr. Jacoby, for rejoining us, and I'll let you give an introduction to any of the updates you'd like to speak to.
Sure. Thank you for having me. For the record, Jack Jacoby, 144 Bank Street, Alworth, representing the applicant. Dan Campbell was not feeling well. He may be virtual, but we had hoped last night to close with a conservation condition, but unfortunately, Horace Lewitten has not opined on the latest set of plans, and so therefore, we had to continue that to April 8th. We are optimistic that they will opine, that they will agree with the changes Dan made, and so hopefully, we can conclude with you in somewhat a similar time frame.
Okay.
So what we wanted to do tonight was to bring our traffic engineer with us.
Perfect.
He's here. And you may remember that when we first filed the traffic report, it was 72 units and included Lot E. Now we're down to 60 units without Lot E, and so that was reviewed by your peer reviewer, I think it was VHB.
Yep.
Who did it. And so without me, more of your time. Then introduce yourself.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Daniel Lasivra, traffic engineer with Bonn Racing Associates. The last time I spoke for the board, I believe it was October of last year, and as Jack had alluded to, we have made a couple revisions to the traffic study. At that October meeting, there were comments by the board that had said we should look at some additional developments along the Route 140 corridor. There were, I think, three or four of those, so we went back and we revised our analysis after talking to Brian and the town and getting the details from those developments. Then also, as Jack had said, we also reduced the project from 72 units to 60 units. So those are kind of the two main updates to the traffic setting. At the end of the day, there was kind of no change in the outcome, regardless of even the reduced number of units. We still have the same mitigation package, still proposing to retime a couple of the intersections where we had identified there were some existing capacity issues independent of the project. So kind of the high level, nothing had changed with the update to the traffic setting. Then we were thankful enough to receive the thoughtful peer review and comments from VHB on February 1st, their letter, and they were mainly in agreement with the majority of things that we had proposed as a part of the study. There were just a few comments relating to clarifications about the proposed mitigation, ensuring that we look at the signal timings with a specific emphasis on safety at the 140 Route 123 intersections, and then just making sure that lines of sight at the two proposed driveways not only met the minimum standards, but can also be maintained without sight line easements, which they can. The site triangles, which was one of the attachments of our response letter, they're all within the public right of way, meaning that they can be maintained without having to go onto other private property. And then their kind of last main comment was just making sure that delivery vehicles and fire trucks can enter both driveways, can exit both driveways, can circulate throughout the site. So as a part of our letter, there was also some auto turn analysis of those trucks as well, which they can get in both driveways, get out both driveways, and circulate throughout the site.
Have you shown them to the fire department?
I believe the fire department has, I don't know if you know for certain, I'm pretty sure, or if Dan Campbell is online, but I think they have looked at the plan, the new ed updated plans.
I don't have in my file a letter from the fire department.
Yep.
But is Dan with us or not with us? He's not with us. So if we can hold that question and get that answer for you.
If you could, just both with regards, there's an, I'm thinking it's Level Design Group's response, saying that they intend to, they don't intend to confirm with the fire department until just prior to construction, on both the access and circulation generally, and then with respect to snow storage. And I think we'd all probably prefer it if the fire department weighed off on it before we signed off on the site plan.
I understand entirely. I will speak with Mr. Campbell tomorrow.
Thank you.
It's, I mean, it's normal, it is usual to have the fire department at this stage to take a look at it and to submit the truck turning plans.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good. And if there are any other specific questions that the board might have, I know it's been a while, so if you just kind of want me to run through, once again, the high level overview of the traffic study or anything like that, let me know. I'm more than happy to.
I think that might be good just to, for Adam, I'm not sure if you want to pull it up again, I maybe had it up a second ago. Just to go through the, I know that all of the volumes are based on calculations from DITE in terms of how many trips are expected during peak hours. And I understand that you're not responsible for the mess that is the intersection of 140 and 123 in that intersection, but just understand the impact on that intersection, the intersection with the Reservoir Street, since it's already kind of a funky intersection.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
And then from a, just kind of overall kind of perspective, because it's a, an area that has a lot of traffic problems already, so kind of, even if you're not the cause of that, it's, there's a, there's something to be said for the argument, and I'm not saying I'm making it, but why would you put more things where there's already a problem?
Yep.
So just in terms of quantifying the impact that you see.
Yep. Not a problem. I can certainly go through and, and do that. Not to kind of put you on the spot, but actually, putting up the traffic study, it's, putting up the traffic study itself is fine, but it's a relatively long document. I will make you flip through to find specific pages, but if you want to, it looks like that.
Sure.
That'd be great. So just in general, like I said, we had updated the traffic study. All the counts that we used were broken up to in March of 2023, while schools, specifically Wheaton, were in regular session, just to make sure that we had accounted for the normal traffic going within that area. Based on other counts in the area, we found that volumes in March are above 5% above average month conditions, which is what mass DOT guidelines say that we should be designing and running our analysis for, but to just kind of provide a conservative estimate to evaluate the project, we did not reduce those volumes. We kind of left them at that elevated position. We looked at three or two different interceptions, depending on how you count it. The Route 140, that's fine. That'll work. So the Route 140 Reservoir Street intersection, which I think is just kind of off page up to the north, which is an unsignaled intersection. Then we looked at the two signalled intersections in close proximity to each other, now where 140 hits 123. And we found that Mansfield, they have itself, carries about 10,000, a little over 10,000 vehicles on an average day, with around 750 to 850 during the commuter peak hours. So those are when most people are going to and from work, where the roadway sees its heaviest volume of vehicles. We then projected those volumes seven years into the future, taking into account the background developments that the board had made comments about, as well as just kind of bumping up the numbers relative to, to account for traffic growth in the area for developments that are not proposed, that are not before the town yet, just to kind of establish a no build condition. We then estimated trips for the project itself, using statistics published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers or the ITE, which has many, many data sites, especially for multifamily residential projects such as this, just to estimate how many trips it's going to generate. We found that on an average day, it was about 460 vehicle trips over the course of 24 hours, and that is a one-way trip. So a vehicle that leaves for work in the morning and comes back in the evening counts as two trips. So it's not 640 vehicles, it's really 230 vehicles, one entering, one exiting over the course of the day, with around 40 to 50 during those commuter peaks, 40 to 50 trips. So once again, 20 to 25 vehicles that either enter or exit the project site. And then when you kind of look at just the large amounts of vehicles that 140 processes on a daily basis, the 460 over the course of 24 hours, or 40 to 50 during the peak hours, is not going to be a, an increase in traffic that is going to be readily apparent to an average motorist, and just daily fluctuations on the roadway will cover a certain portion of that. Then we added those to the no build volumes, to make our build volumes, ran our analysis and compared those, just to see what the impact of the project is. And we found that it was an, that it was quantified as an increase in vehicle queuing of up to four or five vehicles. So that essentially means if you're stopped waiting at a light, there's six, seven vehicles in front of you now, there is, one project goes in, going to be, oh, I forgot that I said, 11 or 12 vehicles in front of you then. So then that formed the basis of our recommendations for our mitigation, which was to retime those two signalled intersections. And with that retiming, we found that we were able to take operations and the capacity of those intersections and actually improve them such that they're better than the no build conditions, those future conditions without the impact of the project. So you were able to reduce motor delays and vehicle queuing by more than the impact of the project, going back towards existing conditions actually now, essentially mitigating the impact of the project at those intersections. And then we found at Reservoir Street, it was only an increase in vehicle queuing of up to one or two vehicles, I believe, which is very consistent with unsignalled side streets along the 140 corridor or anywhere else in the Commonwealth. And then we just had recommendations, kind of mainly that VHB had also pointed out in their peer review letter, making sure site distances were acceptable, making sure that fire trucks could get in and out of the site, so on and so forth. So now that everyone's eyes are glazed over as I talk about traffic for 10 minutes, if there's anything else specific, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, and to avoid putting words into VHB's mouth. We think that we are close to wrapping up the peer review process. We just, I believe, submitted the letter on Friday, so I don't know if they've had time to review it. We haven't received any, anything from them, but we are anticipating that the letter's going to come back clean, that all the boxes have been checked, so on and so forth, as it relates to traffic.
I have two questions. Well, the first one first. You just mentioned the total volume in and out of the site. You said that at peak hours, it was 20 to 25 at each end? Is that correct?
Vehicles, yeah. Forty, specifically 41 trips during the morning and 46 trips during the evening.
And that was 80, but the total volume in and out of the site was 600, I think you said?
Was 460 over the course of the whole day.
He reversed numbers at one point in what he was saying and made 460 into 640, so that's what you did.
Okay. The ratio seemed a little bit...
Off with the 40 to the 600, yes.
Okay.
I apologize for that, yes. 460.
460 and 80 and 40, and those on each end are in the peak hours, and the remaining 380 are not in the peak hours.
Correct.
According to ITE calculations.
Yes.
Okay. And I think we touched on this when you first presented, but just in terms of, you talk about resignalizing the intersections and going through that, just in terms of how that process works, in terms of how it is actually executed, and I know that's a coordination mistake, correct?
Yep. So we'd have to go forward and apply for a mastop permit, then work kind of with them to come up with the signal timings and then the actual implementation there, so it isn't just a, a town permit or anything like that. We do need to go to the state.
From what I understand, what I remember, recall, is that you apply for a permit for the state, the state makes you do all the work, and then makes you do everything else, and then they check the box on there, basically.
Essentially, yes. You said it, not me.
Yeah. And I assume that you would include a condition that we make that application and undertake those steps if you should deem to approve the project.
I think that it would be silly of us not to take advantage of the potential for any improvements to traffic flow in that area. And Laura, I'm not sure if you wanted to note that down and...
Got it.
Yes. One of our board members has a tracker going of all of the potential conditions that we discuss as a board, so that's whatever, just making sure that we capture them.
As I often tell clients, traffic is issue one, two, and three, and then drainage and other things come in five and six. So traffic is always the key in every hearing I ever go to.
Yes.
It always makes it real interesting for me.
Keeps you busy.
Yeah.
Okay. So, as we're traffic engineer, any additional questions that anybody has based on the summary, based on the report?
Well, the traffic looks fine.
The report looked good.
Okay.
Are those permits from the state hard to come by, or is it just you're doing all the legwork so they can stamp it?
They are thrilled to have a private party come in, take care of their, kind of take care of it. They, there are literally tens of thousands of intersections that the Commonwealth controls. They do not have the staff to do any of this stuff. So every time a project is proposed, they take advantage of the fact that we pledged to you that we're going to do certain things.
I did see a hand raised from Peter.
Yes, yes, I live, I live not too far from there at 157, and I go by that intersection a couple of times, and it can get busy during the morning, and it can get busy in the afternoon. So you're doing a good job with your traffic study. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
I got a question that I need.
Yeah. I made the exception for Peter, when I'm trying to read the public comments at the end. I know he's not going to run away.
I'm sorry, I was surprised by that, so.
No, no, it's okay. I guess I give Peter a bit too much latitude sometimes.
It's okay.
If there are no other questions on traffic, or is there?
Sorry, it is site plan, which I have a feeling is probably Dan Campbell. There was a question with regards to providing delivery vehicle a dedicated parking spot, and the response from Level Design was, to the extent that one were provided, it's unlikely it would be used by a mail truck or other delivery service provider. And while I agree with you, I'm wondering if we should at least make the effort and put signage up to that extent. I'm thinking specifically, not necessarily USPS, but more about, you've got 60 units and those people are going to order from Amazon, and Amazon is going to send every single package in a different van. So I'm kind of thinking, you know, after dinner, everybody's at home, parking lot's full, you know the Amazon driver is just going to either block people, double park, prevent access. I'm not saying we need to provide one, you know, right outside the door, close to the front doors of each building, to at least attempt something orderly might be a nice idea. That's just a thought. I don't know whether anybody would agree.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, it's frequently done in these projects. The Amazon drivers frequently ignore them.
Yeah.
But the way they do these buildings generally is there's a package delivery room right inside the front door, and then when you go in to your, went to your apartment, you have code that you can punch in to get in, to get into the delivery room, to get your particular package. And also frequently, they have a system whereby when the Amazon person puts it in there, they then send a code that goes up to your apartment, so if you go into your apartment, you see on the screen that you have a package down there. So they try and, they try and make it quick in and out for the Amazon driver, but I absolutely agree with you.
Yeah.
But we can certainly put a hatched delivery area, you have the space on the site to do that.
I think it just might help with the flow and, you know, not irritating the, not that, I get, you can't, you can lead a horse to water, but let's at least try and make the effort and make it easier for the residents that are there.
I've got a note.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions for traffic engineer at this time? No? Okay.
One other quick update that I forgot to give you is that we're making progress on the sewer line. Had a meeting last Friday that thankfully I didn't have to attend, but Dan is making great progress with the design engineers on getting exactly what the sewer department wants for the, for the line. And of course, the most important thing to our client is that it's financially doable, and that is also looking very favorable right now, so, because we could not possibly build the building without the sewer line. So it looks like things are moving quickly and in the right direction on that front.
Okay.
So that is what we have for tonight.
I was just going to ask, I know that you and our town council had some conversations about the affordable housing regulations. I won't...
Do you want me to address that?
You can address it to whatever jury you feel necessary, other than I think that we would tend to listen to town council, as to the interpretation of our bylaws.
I fully understand that, and I will say, however, that I was surprised, in the first instance, the opinion letters that I write and ones that I typically see are addressed to the full planning board, not to Tim. And secondly, they're signed by the firm, but perhaps things had to be done fairly quickly because of the meeting coming up, and so the email choice was made...
I think that may have been the route there, especially because it was in response to a, a please give me a response email for myself. So I will take, I will take ownership of the, of the format of it.
Okay. As to the substance, I have to say I completely disagree with town council. She changed the words. It says in existence as of that date in October 20 years ago, and it doesn't say in existence beginning from. At the end of her opinion, though, she kicked it back to you and said, it's up to you to decide what it means. And so I would suggest to you that it may be fairly obvious what was intended, but it isn't what was written, in my opinion. I would initiate through your process to change this for clarity, and...
I will say, separate of this, the town is currently going through a zoning recodification process.
Okay. And you might want to put that on their radar screen, that the language is suspect.
Yes.
And, but the other thing she said, which, which I found unusual, was that that section has two sections. One applies to division of land, and the other applies to multifamily. And the section that applies to the division of land had language in it that made it clear that it applied prospectively rather than as to things that existed as of that date. And there is a, contrary to what town council said, the rules of statutory construction say that if in the same areas you use differing language, that's because you intended differing results. And that's probably something you've heard before.
Not specifically, but it makes sense.
Yeah.
From a, from a contextual language basis, I would agree that that tends to make sense.
So for those, I mean, frankly, I think she tortured the English language. I don't know how else to say it. And in existence as of October 8th, 2003, or whatever the date was, it says to me that it had to be existing on that date. As of doesn't mean beginning from. There is no dictionary that I've ever seen that she says, there is a dictionary, but there's no dictionary that says as of means beginning from. So you will have to make a decision, and whatever your decision is, there will be consequences one way or another. And, but I think that, I mean, I'm an advocate. I'm here representing my client, advocating for my client. I don't expect you to take my word over town council, but I do expect you to, at least in your deliberations, think through the things we're saying and make a careful and reasoned decision, which I'm sure is what you do every time, but lawyers like to say those things, so. But we, I just completely disagree with her, and I was quite surprised to see what she said and the way she said it. But again... And, um, I was quite surprised to see what she said and the way she said it. Um, but again, in the first instance, it's up to you. And depending on what you say, there may be consequences.
If, if I could. I was gonna, just to, from a procedural standpoint, you've not presented anything in terms of meeting this section of the bylaw in your, in what you've provided to us. From a decision standpoint, in terms of procedure, if we were to include a condition, um, assuming that whatever takes place afterwards takes place afterwards, that a applicant to either meet that or provide payment and move, rather than it being a, an unaddressed item.
I, I would fully expect them to address it in your decision. If you decide the way town council suggested, then my client has a decision to make.
Yes.
And I don't want to commit to anything.
Yeah.
Clients often surprise me. And, uh, sometimes they make decisions that, I, you know, I, I fully agree with and other times they don't. You know, and, and I don't want to raise the specter of appeal, but you also have to understand that from my client's perspective, if they filed an appeal and it goes through the court process, it delays starting construction of the project significantly. And so there are balancing factors on the economics that always take place.
Yes, understood.
And so, um, well, I might advocate for one position or another. I'm only an advocate. I'm not the decision maker.
Tim. I had a, I had a, I had a manager who once said, this would be so much simpler if it wasn't for the customers. I enjoyed that one so much, I reuse it every chance I can.
Yes, yes, I understand. Uh, my secretary often says if all the clients were reasonable and rational, we wouldn't have jobs. So, uh.
Similar idea.
Yes.
Steve, you had a question just?
Yeah, to address sort of the affordable housing thing in town. Um, I don't know which town meeting, but it was the last couple of town meetings, one of them. Uh, we had reached our quota in town on whether we want to require bill, builders to build affordable housing, because we've already met, uh, met what we've been required.
It's, it's just a requirement that means that we don't, we don't have to approve forty Ps essentially.
But the town voted it very much in favor of continuing to keep that requirement on builders, even, even if we meet the quota. So.
Well, it's, that's done from a procedural standpoint, because as new houses get built, it's potential that the threshold percentage drops below that ten percent. So it's in our best interest to maintain, once we've hit the ten percent, to maintain the ten percent.
I agree. But I'm just saying that's what we, as a town, we all sort of, we agreed that we want to continue having affordable housing.
Um, if I would also just offer, and Tim could correct me, I, I don't think we've had another applicant who has interpreted our bylaws in this way in the twenty-one years that they've been written. Would that be accurate?
I can only speak for the time that I've been on the board. I don't recall one. But I think as Mr. Jagovi has said, we all have, we can all read the words in front of us. We can all see what town council has provided. It's on us to interpret what we feel the bylaw is asking. So. Okay.
Okay. Um, anything else you wish us to address tonight?
I think that there were a couple of checking the box items with the site plan, but, um, just given the, the nature of it, which is conservation and everything else, I think just in terms of, there was something, Laurie said there was one thing where it said to be.
The lighting and landscaping plan has a stamp on it that says, uh, it's to be updated prior to construction, but it's part of the site plan review.
Yeah, I, I understand why that legend is there because, um, every special permit I've ever seen says you build in accordance with the plans you filed with us.
Right.
That does make it simpler.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
That's it.
So.
So after the public speaks, we will ask you to continue this to your next meeting. Uh, hopefully we will have finished with conservation by then.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I know we did have.
Yes, please, thank you. Cheryl Senior, one sixty-nine Reservoir Street. Um, so quickly, I'll take the same order on with the traffic. I was just curious if volumes on Reservoir Street were looked at as far as what it will look like once those apartments are all in there. And I don't know if that was covered in there, but you know.
Can I answer that?
The, the volumes of Reservoir Street relative to the apartments there or the apartments by McDonald's or both? Did that, or they did include the new development by McDonald's as part of the, we assume it's built and all the cars there are on the road.
So I think it's good that it was, it was open broad. I'm just personally, if I lived there, coming home, if I didn't need to stop at the bank or, I would take Reservoir Street. It's a nicer ride. And when you get to the end of it, you don't have to cross the lane to get into the lot. You just come around the end and go in. It would be the, to me, that would be the way that people, that, that's how I would access it. And I'm also thinking when there's Xfinity events, there's more people having to go down there in order to avoid one forty, et cetera. So I was just curious if that was even a part of the traffic, if anyone looked to see if there was maybe an effect on Reservoir Street. The new buildings.
Okay.
Sixteen new.
Understood. Okay. Then any additional questions that you had that we can?
Not regarding the traffic.
Okay.
Okay. So the lighting plan, I was curious if the, and I'm sorry to make it a repeat itself, I wasn't here for all of this, obviously. I was wondering if the lighting for the lots who are attached to the buildings or if they were on holes and if they were holes in the lot at what height. And my last concern, uh, has to do with the stormwater drainage and design. Um, I hope that you all had a chance to take a look at the photos that I forwarded, taken Sunday morning on Reservoir Street. All that water as a result of three new homes that obviously were not, were inadequately or had an inadequate stormwater drainage design. So my concern really is that the town is still looking at events, that the number of rain events and the amount of the volume of rain we're getting with each event that we had as the outlier event, when that's not the case. We have to be more conservative. That's a small area which between Reservoir and Route one forty, there's no place for this water to go, but it's going to go. Water winds always. So I'm really concerned that if that's happening with these three homes, now you've got the, what, sixteen structure subdivision going in on one side, which I still maintain should have access from one forty north Reservoir Street as a result, in part to help lessen, you know, that kind of flooding. And then the two, the two buildings, sixty units on the other side. And make sure that that's actually looked at and the design is more conservative. And maybe this is the conservation commission not the planning board, but I'm throwing it out there anyway because I believe they're still looking at that stuff.
Stormwater is always something that crosses both, both boards.
Yes.
The peer reviewer in this case. So their engineer has done all their work. The idea that the stormwater bylaw says you have to keep as much water on your site as there was before you put a shovel in the ground. So no increase in water leaving the site.
Well, yeah, which is why you got photos. Obviously failed. Um, and that's just three.
Yeah.
Well, we should talk about how there's no stormwater report requirement for just a single family home to be built.
That's the, depending on the size of the disturbance, there's not a requirement for anybody to look at it.
I understand. So again, my concern was more that this type, this, the volume and number of events and the water coming in is considered routine, not as an obligation, whether we caught up with that one.
If I could speak to one more thing, uh, the other development down Reservoir couldn't have access from one forty because the road would have to cross hundreds and hundreds of feet of deep wetland.
Yeah, but they've already made it their, their, and they've already said that it's their intention to.
They can't put a road across that area.
Push the area across.
It'll, it'll never happen.
I hope.
It's very, very deep well and.
But I know it's their intention and, you know, where there's a will is often the way. So.
That, uh, a design of that project has already been before the board and rejected. So it's on them to come up with something better, otherwise I think they know what the result would be.
And again, I understand boards aren't here to tell people what to build. They're here to tell people how to build what they, what they want. And if they can't, they can't. If they shouldn't, they shouldn't. It's a lot of development for a small area. And I just, I just don't have a good, I don't, I'm not optimistic that we aren't going to be dealing with a lot of water issues going forward regardless. But with this development, I don't see how we can, if we don't get smart about how relevant people can be.
Thank you. Uh, so I think, um, if, you know, I'm just coming up to speak to the traffic aspects of that just from a, um.
Yeah, I think the short answer is yes, the traffic on Reservoir was studied, but I'll let the experts.
So from a, I can visualize in my head, but the idea is that the behavior of residents at the site, rather than, it, also when they come from four ninety-five down one forty, um, that they might choose to leave one forty and go onto Reservoir and then just hook around.
Hook around.
At the end and go in rather than go all the way down. It's probably, probably adds maybe two or three tenths of a mile, maybe a bit more. I'm going to ballpark that. Probably be wrong, but.
So we did, the answer is yes, we did look at traffic on Reservoir Street. We did also specifically model vehicles making that exact, uh, turn, coming down Reservoir Street, taking the right, heading north on one forty and going into the project site. Um, we estimated about thirteen percent of, of traffic would be coming down and making that movement rather than just coming down one forty and going in. Um, but that was, that was part of the study.
Okay, thank you.
And with regard to the height of the polls, I don't have that information and Dan isn't with us, but I have a note to make sure that we get the answer to that. Uh, and then just to follow up on the stormwater issues, what the chairman said is hundred percent accurate. Um, and that's why the town does not rely solely on our engineering, but has it peer reviewed. Um, and then the other thing to remember is that because there are wetlands here, we can neither starve nor drown the wetlands. So in addition to keeping all of our water on site and infiltrating as much as possible, we also have to take into account the volume and rate that water gets into the wetlands. So all of those things are part of the drainage report. All of those things are peer reviewed.
And, uh, obviously the, the rain events in the past few weeks have been significant for a lot of areas. So.
And what seems to be even worse is that the ground is soaked and so there's nowhere for it to go. Uh, and, you know, I remember about a year and a half ago before it started raining when we had drought. So it's, uh, it's, uh, hard to, to, um, to understand. But, uh, I went to the Northern Country Club on Sunday and played nine holes walking. And I have to say, it was wet.
I was gonna say, do you need new shoes?
Uh, I hope my shoes are drying out on the court right now.
We'll see.
You still got to play golf in March.
That, that's true. You get to play golf in March. Yeah.
Oh, so. Addiction isn't a perfect thing to.
No, but we, we don't.
I forget to play golf in March.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me, I just had one question that I have to clarify on the traffic study. Um, so that thirteen percent trips from the, from those buildings, when you said you looked at other places, did that include development up on Elm Street at Allen Cross? The, how the water, did that?
That was, that was another project that was included.
That was included in that. And the subdivision as well. Thank you very much.
Did you want to? Not to put you on the spot.
Jim Chavitt, fifty-six Mansfield Avenue. Um, so if I understand, this will be continued?
Yes.
So this is not the time for a summation?
Uh, you are happy, you are.
Well, I know we have a shorter agenda and I'd like to help you by not belaboring the point. One quick thing.
The next one will be longer. The next meeting will be longer. So.
There's always one. The, just a quick point. It doesn't seem to affect it anything, but do you realize you advertised this meeting at the media center?
Originally, yes, and that was requested.
Yeah, and I realized that. I scheduled for a library fix that agenda.
Okay.
There, there is a revised agenda online already.
Oh, I couldn't find it.
Same page.
I made it, so it's okay. Just a, just a point, not a complaint. Um, just, just a couple of quick things then. One, when this project was first proposed, the ask was six point five four times the permitted density without a special permit. Um, with the elimination of that one lot, the ask has now gone up to ten times the density. Um, you've got to remember that piece of land is still in play for the future, especially with a sewer line. It's not going to just lie fallow. Um, I believe part of that is due to the conservation requirement that you stay as far away from the wetlands as you can. They couldn't keep that lot in play because that's the place to get further away from the wetlands, although that lot had to be taken out of play for this, um, this project. But what it has done is increased the density from six point five four to ten times the ask. Um, the other thing is conservation has said a few times to me when I've talked to John, that their strongest wish is that the density be reduced, that it's just too dense. And I just wanted to remind you that you are their only, the conservation commission is, is powerless. You are their only aid in that regard. And how's that? Stop there.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any additional questions that, I don't think we have any additional comments here. So.
So what would the date be of the next meeting?
Okay, our next meeting would be. We have the ninth and the twenty-third. Is that what we have?
Yeah, the ninth, we, and we're on for the eighth for the town council. So hopefully we can be here on the ninth and tell you that they have posted here. So our request is to continue.
Anything further? And anything, and I'll say, before we do that, is there anything else that we want to ask the applicant in terms of materials or questions to answer?
I guess I'd get long. Uh, again, I, I mentioned it and we sort of casually went over it, but public access to the wetlands, is there a way we can make sure nobody gets thrown out for walking through the area behind there? I know you're not like, you don't want like parties or anything like that, but I also just want to make sure that the section of woods that, I don't know, for the last hundred years that everybody's been walking through, there's a whole network of trails in there, that at least a portion of that is, is maintained in some way for the area.
We're not going to touch the wetlands.
Sure.
So those trails will be as they are. Um, and we are not proposing a supplemental parking lot or something, if that is what you're asking.
No, just, just, I, I just want to make sure like that it would be expected that sometimes some people are going to walk through the woods.
I, I fully would expect that. If they do that now, they'll continue to do it. It was, it was, human nature is pretty predictable in that regard. So, uh, what I think I said last time is we're not going to be taking license plates in the parking lot and calling the police because you happened to park in one of our parking spaces and take a walk. And so I can't say anything more than that, but I can tell you that's, you know, we intend to be a good neighbor.
So we have a request for our continuance to our next meeting of April the ninth. Is there anything further prior to?
Alright, motion to continue, SBR twenty-one hundred and twenty-one oh three and SB one nine nine two eight and one nine nine three five to equal the night.
Second.
Thank you, Eric and Jim. Is there anything further? Okay, all in favor of continuing? Okay, all in favor of continuing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
See you in a couple of minutes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 300 South Washington Street with an update on SP 203, SPR, SPR-3. And I do believe I see Mr. Diaz on the Zoom call here.
Yes, Mr. Jim.
So thank you for joining us. I will open to you just to provide an update on what has transpired since we saw you last.
Absolutely, just for the record, Eric Diaz, registered professional engineer with Strongpoint Engineering, representing the applicant at 300 South Washington. If I can share my screen is probably the best way that I can sort of walk the board through the changes that we've made and what we had last talked about. So I'm going to bring that up, and I'm going to bring up this plan. This is the plan that we had looked at the last time we were here. If you recall, we had come before you a few months ago, several months ago, probably back in August, and with a request for a parking reduction, and it appears from some comments that we got the last time we were there, we might have gone too far. We had proposed 17 stalls based on what we had determined for usage of a building of this nature. And the general consensus from the board was, eh, how about you get us to about 30? So we took another look at that, the other thing we did is we took a look at the architecture in the front of the building. So just to update and go this way, this is a revised plan. We weren't able to get to 30 parking spaces, there's a line missing here, but we added one stall here and we added 12 stalls on this side. The idea would be that we would probably do employee parking on this side, and this would be sort of overflow for that poor guy that is sucking in the help of his buddies move. He could park his car here and the people loading and unloading through the main entrance would go this way. So with that, we provided a walkway along the building. We extended the walkway, ended over here at our utility room, all the way across. And we did add another entrance in this location here, just to dress up sort of the front of the building. And I do have the architectural plans with me. So this is the elevation of the front of the building. There were some comments last time that, you know, from this point over, it's all pretty uniform and maybe looks a little bland. So we asked our architect to take a little look at that, and they came up with this. So they've added some different colored paneling, just to kind of break it up a little bit, some different treatments with bricks, an awning over a door here and some glass up above. And, you know, that'll help dress things up certainly from South Washington, which is where I would say the least of our traffic will see the building. The most of the traffic that's going to see the building is going to be from 495. And that's why on, in this back corner here, and over here, and over here, the corners that face northward on 495, those do have glass in them to prevent, you know, present a nice storefront basically, so it'll be very attractive from the highway as well.
I think I've seen that on other storage buildings as well, where they have the stairways you can see through the windows or something, just to get a peek in, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, sometimes they even put like faux, you know, unit doors and stuff in there just so you have a sense of what you're looking at. So the only other update that I can offer is this change really did very little to our site design. Outside of that, I'm just going to scroll through a little bit. We had to add one more row to the subservice infiltration system that is here, and that has gone from 21 to 28 chambers. The reason that I bring that up is simply that this has been submitted to the Conservation Commission for a notice of intent, it has not been heard yet. I believe we're opening that meeting on April 8th. And as obviously this board knows, the ConCon does carry and hold the stormwater bylaw permit. But we are very confident with the design, the design meets and exceeds all of the state and local requirements. So to the extent that there are comments related to stormwater, my expectation is they would be very minor in nature, nothing that would, you know, reinvent the wheel here, so to speak. So that is really it, as far as what we have for updates at this time. I'm glad to go in your direction for me, Mr. Jim.
Okay. So thank you for adding the spots, I think that gets us closer to what we were, what we all kind of agreed in our past session, we thought was the a good fit. I'll turn to members here to ask if there are any further questions that they have, based on the updates that you provided today.
Not a question, but a comment. I just want to say thank you for the facade work, it's a great example of what more people in town should be doing with their buildings.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I see you about to ask a question, Laura, so just go for it.
I was just wondering if they were looking, are you looking for a decision tonight from us?
Well, I'll defer to the board. We do have an application for site plan review plus two special permits in front of you. That I believe what we, the board may have been thinking at the last meeting, and not to put words in their mouth, but my interpretation was they kind of wanted to see these improvements in what they did, and perhaps here what the ConCon has to say as far as stormwater is concerned. Certainly, if this board wanted to, they could condition a vote on ConCon being satisfied and issuing the stormwater permit. But I'm going to go in this case at the comfort level of the board. I don't need to push for anything specific here, so as much as I would love to wrap it up and take it off your agenda, I believe it up to you folks.
Okay. But in general, you would be comfortable if we were to close the public hearing and proceed along those lines?
I would, yes, yes, I would.
Okay. I always ask that question bluntly, when you're not done with other boards, in terms of, we don't think they're going to reinvent the wheel, but if for some reason we decide we want square wheels, then you'd be back for us for the modification?
That is, that is true. In a case like this, I really couldn't imagine what would change substantially that would alter sort of the intent of a site plan approval or a special permit here. And like you just said, if the completely unexpected happened, we'd be back on their modification application.
Okay. Yes, I would say in many cases, the board often takes the route of, when do you think it'll be done with conservation, let's try and wrap it up at roughly the same point. I'm not sure if, if you're aware, Norton does have a town election at the end of April.
April 20th.
And we do have two board members that would be, whose spots would be up for election at that point. So I think my, if I'm going to put my finger on the scale, I think I would, my preference, speaking for myself, would be that it may make sense to try and close this out prior to that date.
I would feel comfortable with the adjustments that they've made of passing a conditioning tonight, just as long as Conservation gives the stormwater approval on the 8th.
My only question about asking whether they were ready is, I didn't know whether, it's a site plan review, do we need a landscape and lighting plan, because I don't see that in here. And I also don't see where they intend to put snow storage, which I think should be on the site plan, unless I've missed it.
If I may through the chair, address that?
Sure, please.
And with regard to snow storage, we had originally intended to put it in this location where these 12 extra stalls are. Obviously, we can't do that at this point, and the other thing we can't do is push it to the opposite side, into the stormwater basin or closer to the wetland. So what we've kind of been forced to do is add some requirement notation to the plan that says that, I'm paraphrasing here, but basically, the snow needs to be pushed to the edges of the pavement to the maximum extent practicable, and when the site, if and when the site runs out of snow storage capacity, it needs to be trucked off-site in accord with all state and local regulation. Unfortunately, with a bit of a tight site and a good amount of stormwater mitigation, we are running out of room for, you know, excessive amounts of snow storage.
Okay.
And with regard to a lighting and landscape plan, I, forgive me, we did not include that in the plan set just yet. We had not also requested a waiver for it. So again, certainly the board could condition if we provide one in accord with the regulations and the bylaw requirements, or the board could wait until we are able to provide that.
Okay, thank you. Depending on volumes, I could also see that... The pragmatist in me feels like a couple of those spots on the left-hand side of the site might get used as a snow storage in some cases.
It, it's possible. And again, you know, the way I'm viewing these is sort of backup spaces, for lack of a better word. We did kind of talk at the last time that we met, that really the ITD data for this dictates somewhere between six and 10 spaces needed. So I do think that we have more spaces than we need, and to the extent that we open up in a timeframe that's before the winter, which is very likely, and we can determine what that is, maybe some of those spaces do get dedicated for snow storage.
Okay. And in terms of the landscaping and lighting plan aspects of this, is that something that members feel is something that we could condition? Or something that we would want to see prior to closing the public hearing?
I mean, conditions fine, it's in the industrial park next to the highway, there's no houses.
I'm fine with it too, if I could just ask to just make sure the landscape and plan doesn't have any plantings that, yeah, deer and rabbit-proof plantings, please.
Oh, absolutely.
They do like all of the arborvitae's around Norton.
I've got, with my backyard, they could not survive very well either, so I feel your pain.
Okay.
But yeah, I agree with Steve, given that it's an industrial.
Okay.
There's a billboard right there.
So we would, so I'm hearing general assertions that we are good to close the public hearing.
Yes.
This is before, as per with a site plan and a special permit, so the site, the special permit would need five yes votes to proceed. We do have one member who is not here this evening, so we have an option to close the pub, to continue, which is option A. Option B would be to close the public hearing and vote at a later date. And option three would be to close the public hearing and vote all this evening. With the understanding, if we feel like we need Allen's vote to, in one direction or another, then maybe option B makes more sense.
I'm going with C. They've done what we've asked with the parking spaces, with the facade, and cleaning everything up. As long as we condition with ConCon and do the landscape and lighting, I'm fine.
And Mr. Diaz, just to summarize, the waivers that you requested are for parking, and what other waivers have been requested?
It's actually a special permit for a parking reduction, and it's a special permit for an industrial building over 10,000 square feet.
I was just...
So I, I think that's technically two separate special permits, I would defer to Brian on that.
We have one special permit, but just two motions.
Okay, sure.
Okay. So those are the two motions that we would need to make as it relates to the way to relieve for this applicant, and then we would be looking for a condition of the stormwater landscaping and lighting. And is there anything further that we need to ask for at this point? And this is the point of the discussion, Mr. Diaz, where I always say it is on the applicant to request any relief that they need, so if there's anything else that you need from a relief standpoint from this board, let us know.
Yes, sir, we've done a pretty thorough review, and to my knowledge, the only relief we're looking for are those two special permits.
Okay. So if there's any further discussions for the applicant, go for it. If there's not, then I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, thank you, Eric and Jim. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further action that we would like to take in regards to the decision or in terms of tabling a vote to a future session?
It was like two motions?
It's an A or a B?
Why A is two motions tonight, right?
Yes.
Like, motion to approve, uh, special permit, 20381 in regards to building over 10,000 feet, 10,000 square feet?
And the reduction in parking?
And a reduction in parking.
Okay.
Do we have to put the conditions in right now with that motion?
I was going to say, and that motion to approve the special permit is with the conditions that we've discussed, in that they get a stormwater permit from Conservation and they submit a landscaping and lighting plan prior to construction?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Again, this is to approve the special permit with conditions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So that is the special permit, do we have an additional action on these site plans?
A motion to approve the site plan review, 3?
SPR-3?
SPR-3.
And with, again, the same conditions for stormwater landscaping and lighting?
The same conditions, yep.
Okay.
Seconded.
And we have a second, thank you, Eric and Steve. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the special, the site plan review, the site plan? Okay. Again, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. The application has been approved with conditions, and we will work on getting a decision issued in the coming days.
That's great, thank you all very much for your time and your help with this, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. The last item on the public hearing section of our agenda is continuation of SPR-1 for Zero West Main Street. This was an application for 218 boarding houses, the applicant is seeking to withdraw without prejudice. They are not at the meeting this evening.
And we have...
And we received a letter saying that they'd like to withdraw. So... We would need a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice?
Seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to withdraw? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. That application is withdrawn. Okay. So with that posted, we will close the public section of our agenda, and the board will move into a short executive session. Again, this is related to, and I just closed it, of course. I have to go through the whole, short executive session related pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, 2183, Justice Strategy Related to Penning Litigation, Notice Condy and Capella Partners, City versus Town Norton Planning Board. We are, I am declaring that discussing the matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect We are, I am declaring that we, discussing the matter in the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board. So a vote, we would need a vote to go into executive session. Any possible votes may occur. After which, the board will not return to the open session, and then we will adjourn. So, I need a motion.
Seconded.
And a second. Thank you, Jim and Eric. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of moving to executive session, although the board will not return, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much, everybody. That concludes the public session of our agenda this evening.